Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order. And I'm turning it over to our distinguished council president.
All right, well, welcome, everybody. We have a very busy agenda tonight and so I ask when you're talking, don't do any kind of friends, Romans, countrymen stuff, just get straight to the point and deliver whatever the point is, okay? Because it'll be hard getting through it all in the time that we have allocated. With that said, we'll move on to the building report by our town's permanent administrator. And Steve. It's on my laptop.
Well, this was actually a busier month than I anticipated in summertime in Somerset. There's a bit of instruction going on. My report has all of the updates highlighted within yellow. That's the one of the items worth pointing out has been some ongoing quality or management issues for the construction project at forty-seven twelve Fallstone. The town manager and I had to engage directly with the contractor, the general contractor, the man who's, I think, built it several times. They've been very responsive, but there have been those sort of issues that we don't necessarily see about the construction site, so. I guess the bottom line is for the town staff, we're trying to keep on top of it. And there may be some more issues in the future that we will also address.
Can you give us an example of these issues that we don't see on other sites generally?
Debris and nails off the work site and in the town right of way. Other sites generally, even though the site might look kind of hodgepodgey on their property. In the town's right of way, they required to keep a plane in general, they do. They also had some parking issues at forty-seven twelve, although in fairness to the contractor, a mitigating factor in that in the recent parking issue was they poured concrete for replacement sidewalk, and because the concrete hadn't set yet, it couldn't park on the property. Now, they could have parked elsewhere. They chose to park like eight vehicles on Fallstone, so that's the issue. That's the one.
Thank you.
Those are the highlights. Does anyone have any questions on?
I didn't know any. Rohit?
Yeah, no, just three quick points. First, I want to thank thank you, thank EJ, town staff, and you for getting the sidewalk repaired over there, which is just fantastic. I don't know what magic you did, but that's great. I think that I wondered, there's an update from Ron on the situation regarding fence and the property lines on four seven one six Fallstone. And also just a point I wanted to make on four seven one four Essex. You see there that there's discussion about potential changes to the approved reforestation plan with the town's arborist. I just want to just reinforce the point that let's make sure that the town's right of way is not overrun with whatever hedges, shrubbery, trees, and whatever they want to do. So just to remind them about that. Thank you.
Ron?
Yes, so on four seven one six Falston, I provided my thoughts to EJ, but perhaps he could advise what what steps, if any, have been taken since then.
Go, EJ.
Yes. Yes, so Ron reviewed forty-seven sixteen Falstone and submitted following comments. For
Hold on, hold on, EJ, you don't want to, you don't want to read my advice into the record. We might waive the attorney-client privilege, but
basically
So I think, I think the answer is based on the advice of council enforcement action was not taken. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, I'll forward the counsel the side of the report.
All right, thank you. We'll wait for that. Any other questions for Steve on the report?
I can add that I've spoken directly with the homeowner for fifty-five twenty-nine Surry. That's the next door neighbor, the next neighbor of that fence issue. He's concerned about the fence situation. He hasn't decided what actions he wants to take. I had informed him that from a county perspective, this is a civil matter between neighbors, not something the county law will be charged. And it is when I told him, seconded him as I was doing a check of their new ring garden they installed. And he's just focusing on the home construction, having a way of thought about the fence.
Thank you. All right, thanks. All right, thank you, Steve. Now we turn to the town manager's report. You've given yourself five minutes for this.
Well, so the town manager's report, there's items on the agenda and then off the agenda. So for this section, I'll just recover the ones that are not on the agenda later on. The first non-agenda item, whole solar panels. Biggest update from last week is that work is currently scheduled to start the week of September twenty-ninth, eighteen twenty-five. And Deputy Town Manager Justin Forgett has initiated the pre-filing registration with the IRS pay and IRS energy credit program. To file for both this project and the town hall solar panel installation project. The composting pilot at the Somerset Pool has been, has begun and will run through September. I think really the only update besides it actually starting is it looks like the total cost of the pilot will be about three hundred and eighty-six dollars and four cents. The only way that would change is that there's so much compost. Compost crew has to do more than one thing of a week, but I don't think that's likely to happen. So this should be the final pass. Technology, town's government said it's still working on a refresh of its website. It has implemented an online form for the annual registration for the Walter J. Bear Tennis Courts. An online version of the newcomer's form has been implemented. I guess for the newcomer's party. Implementations of the building permit application, town hall rental application, and Utown Council application are all in progress. And at the very latest, should be active by the end of the calendar year. And then as those move along, we're also now exploring the implementation of an online profit management system and online resident request center. I have published RFPs for leaf removal and the social services and snow removal and remediation services. And I believe that is all the updates that are in different towns reports.
That's a question. Why is the cost so high for composting? Is that, is that is there, is that like four weeks worth of pickup? Is that
It's four weeks worth of pickup plus the bin itself and the signage we got.
So the bin must be how much?
The bin was, I could go up the exact amount, but I believe it was eighty dollars.
Is it a very big bin? I haven't been down, you know?
It's at any six gallons.
Yeah.
And so we are charged, like, you know, a normal household is what, about thirty dollars?
We're being charged twenty-five for one pickup a week.
For a household?
Yeah, we're basically being charged a household.
And so it's only twenty-five dollars at the pool?
Yeah. The silent, yeah.
Okay, so three hundred, so that would be like a hundred dollars and then
Yeah, I think three, I think post-shipping, the bin was about a hundred dollars. Then we procured some signage for both the big bin that's outside the pool and for the bin that's inside the pool. And then they had to procure thirty gallon liners for
So we're essentially, um you know, this is a capital investment on the bins. In terms of the bags, they give everybody bags. Why aren't, why, why isn't this bags part of what they do?
For this super pilots, they give us a discount on the pickup, but then we're, they weren't able to be able to give us the thirty gallon liners and time for starting at the very first of September.
So we have to get them ourselves.
And so we got them ourselves. That was kind of the
But if we, if we keep this up, will we have to pay for the bags?
No, but the price would slightly go up to be the normal household price.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for EJ?
Yeah. Can we discuss the pool fence and bridge now, or are they going to, is the bridge going to be on the Dewberry agenda item, just to clarify?
What's to be discussed? I suppose the pool bridge are not actually official agenda items, so.
While you're doing that, I just, I mean, I just want to also say that, I mean, the project management system I think it's great that you're doing that. And I would just encourage you to really give that high, as high priority as you can.
And so for the fence, new items on that, security assessment with the local police is currently scheduled for this Friday, September nineteenth. And even though the priority of the assessment is the fence itself, since they're there, they'll be doing the entire facility, making any recommendations to make sure the council is a procurement policy is completely open. Reopen the bidding process and everything and kind of really prioritize that. And so now we should actually be getting a couple more bids we haven't yet, but heard from about three different companies besides American Pools, which is really good. And then for the bridge, one note on the bridge is if you'll go over this weekend, I added in addition to that part of the report today. I think that's in town, you go drive. But basically, the big thing is that the bridge construction cannot be placed as soon as the pool closes, unfortunately, because the design phase is still ongoing. But I provided an update on why it's kind of taking this long and that it basically be broken down to after the inspection report was presented. The town staff was tasked to get options for the bridge. And so I go through all the options, but basically first we looked at floor replacement. Then we looked at prefabrication of a new superstructure. And then restoration of the current bridge. And then now, since I know for a lot of people in town, a major concern is the timber decking. I've reached out to see if that can be done first and earlier than the rest of the parts of the restoration, all the kind of metalwork and masonry work to see if since then, that's a concern for a lot of people. Once I get back from that, I can send out an update.
Sorry, clarifying. Does Dewberry say that the bridge is structurally safe and sound or not right now?
The bridge itself is structurally safe, but they're recommending until we do work on it to have it inspected every twelve months. But as of their last inspection, they say that while it's not in great condition, it is still safe.
How long? What do they think? No, I, I don't need to
Well, we can ask them.
Dewberry is on the line. It's not really the session, but I could be asked.
Maybe we can come back in the Dewberry agenda item to discuss that.
And Okay, before you go on, I think that Councilmember Connor deserves kudos. Who are questioning why there was only one bid on the, you weren't here. He questioned why there was only one bid on the fence. And because he did, we told him why, which is because nobody wants to be a client. We're not a client. But anyway, because he questioned it, now we have three bids. So kudos.
Just for me to understand, a couple things on the pool fence. So first of all, I mean, given the timeline of where it's going, are we reasonably confident that the pool fence work will start very soon after the season ends?
Yeah, I think we're on track for October.
By October, mid, I mean, like, how soon?
I think it would be early in the mid-October.
This, the second thing is, I was, I was looking at the RFP. One thing I don't understand is, why is this this box for this cover part of the fence project? I mean, fencing company will do the fence, why do we need to also have the same company putting the cover for the pool in that RFP?
It doesn't need to be the same company, but the covers, the box is going to be attached to there right next to the fence. So sort of just have a additional add-on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I, I'm not entirely sure I fully understand the role of American Pools in the fence project. Are they helping us? Like Dewberry's helping us on sidewalks and bridge? Or are they also part of?
They're not a consultant on the project.
So they are, yeah. Because my concern is that the, the RFP reads like American Pools bid, and that I think is a bit, could be a bit troubling with other bidders. I mean, a lot of the specifications are what American Pool put in their bid. Including the actual name of the brand of the pool cover, which seems rather restrictive. I think we should let any company propose whatever brand
And I will, and I will say that two of the potential bidders I've reached, have reached out have asked about that. And I've said that the actual, I have said that the brand is not a part of that, the measurements because of the pool cover are.
Because I just want to say, just for transparency, government transparency. American Pools bid was in the public record of the last meeting. So any bidder can go back in the record of this council meeting and see that we had before us, American Pools bid. They had the RFP as well now in front of them. The losing bidder on this contract is going to put one plus one together and possibly come up with the answer two. So I think, I think we have to be very careful here. That, that, you know, we don't run into trouble about transparency and procurement. Because all the documentation is in the public domain. So I just want to, just want to, you know, give this word of caution. We need to do this carefully now that there are other bidders interested.
Well, I think that, I think that, and Ron, and the town attorney can address this. I think that when so, so the bid last month was publicized with, with the dollar amount. But probably in the future, if it's that kind of situation, the dollar amount shouldn't be publicized. Wouldn't you say how should we handle that, Mr. Town Attorney? Because that, that's, that's a very that's a very valid point, because I think yes, we have to be transparent, but when there's a competitive bidding process, so to speak, we have the right to keep some of those numbers private. So how do you recommend that we do that?
Yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Mayor. You wouldn't want to release the numbers unless they're released to everybody. So everybody's bidding on the same thing. But I mean, once, once you release the numbers too, you might lose some some leverage for the competitive bidding.
Maybe you can discuss it, the EJ, after the meeting.
Okay.
But you don't have to decide now, but I'm glad you brought that up.
Right, we do have to watch our time here. I, one, one last
Also, I, I understand the time, but I just want to be clear. We're doing the people's business and procurement is a sensitive subject.
No, no, but we'll get you that answer later.
Right, no, that's, we shouldn't spend more time on this.
Yeah.
Now, what I'm trying to say, one point, EJ, about the RFP that you issued for leaf pickup. Send one to our current food scraps pickup person, compost crew, because in fact, they are absolutely combining food scraps and compost. And then, and other food scraps folks too, because they're doing that. They are, you might get multiple bids that way.
Okay, awesome.
All right, moving on to discussion on the traffic groups, phase two outputs.
And Paul Dor, traffic group is on this.
Okay, so I hope we've all read the outputs and perhaps noticed the comments that we've received an email on them. So perhaps Paul, you could just try to do a quick summary of your views on it and then we'll ask questions.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So we, the last go around, we, we extended the study to include the entire community for signing and signage and painting of the curb. So that all is underway and we're seeking proposals for the additional signs and the additional curb paintings. We reviewed the speed humps all through the community. And I provided EJ recommendations on three or four of the speed humps, including the crucial one that, that has been requested in the past. There has been some asphalt improvements on both sides of that existing speed hump located along Dorset that really makes that speed hump you know, is not as good as it would be if the improvements weren't made on both sides. Going back to our previous study, we conducted speed analysis, speed study, gathering speeds all through the northern part of the community along Dorset and Cumberland. And the speeds in proximity to that particular speed hump on Dorset were recorded at twenty miles per hour, and that is the posted speed limit along Dorset. So if, if if we can just imagine that the speed hump wasn't there today and I conducted a speed study and the speeds turned out to be twenty miles per hour average along Dorset in both directions. And that's the posted speed, I wouldn't necessarily recommend a traffic calming speed hump at that point. However, you do have a speed hump located at that point, and it is deficient. So based upon the speeds and you know, it's, it really gets down to if you want to spend the money now or when you do a resurfacing project and that may be part of Dewberry's task or scope at some point, you can redo that particular speed hump. But it is on my list of deficient speed humps throughout the community. We also looked at the additional request along two approaches, one on the west side and one next to the school. And we put together sketches for additional pavement markings and additional stop sign and a pedestrian ahead sign. And those are being priced proposal from CMG, the same guys who did the, the curbs paintings. And I've also looked at the corners of the properties in the northern half of the community. And looked at the, the legal information on how you know, the town of Somerset has the ability to require the residential homes to keep their landscaping down to a three and a half foot height. And that is in order to provide good sufficient sight distance for pedestrians, especially coming from, to and from the school on the north side of Cumberland. Cutting those landscaping down to three and a half would really make that particular intersection near the school safer. And EJ has asked me to I guess go through the rest of the community and review those corners and make a determination if sightlines need to be improved and where those sightlines should be cut back. And it would be the town's responsibility the town's responsibility to, I guess, prepare a letter asking the residents to do that and state, you know, what the legal rules are for that request. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It sounds like you may have a question.
Thank you, yes. I'll start, start with our mayor.
Yeah, I just have a question on a related topic. So you know, we have an issue about people that put up commercial signs in the right of way. And I was just wondering, is, how does that affect traffic? If somebody, if there's all kinds of signs at a stop sign or on the street, isn't that a distraction for drivers and a safety issue?
So I, I know the state of Maryland, they, they will, you know, they have folks that are out picking up real estate signs, or if someone is, you know, has an open house on a Sunday and they post a sign within the town of Somerset's right of way, you have every right to remove that sign.
Right, but is it, but isn't it, but isn't it a problem for, for, for is it a safety problem for traffic? Because we're, we're about to write some new sign policies and I just wanted to know if there's good public policy behind that.
Sure, as long as it's below three and a half feet, which is driver's eye to driver's eye. So that's, that's really the rule that would apply if, if someone's posting a, you know, open house this Sunday on Dorset or any other street and it's mounted high right under a stop sign. Again, you have, I think, the legal right to
Okay, thank you. I, I don't want to go off topic too long. We'll, we'll talk to you after, but thank you for that excellent information. Okay, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Thank you for the summary. And now we'll take questions from council members. Anyone?
Well, I was just wondering, so for that, for that speed bump that it doesn't really work, I guess, but we're not but the town doesn't seem to be driving over the speed limit there. Would you like, I thought that was a speed bump that was working for like, you know, years. So like, I kind of slowed down for it anyway. I didn't really know it didn't work. Um, would you, would we be recommending to take that, whatever it is now, away?
No, no, I, I, again, the, the visual of the speed bump being there is actually in a, in a way slowing cars down. It was, it does provide some geometric delay, which is probably the reason that our speeds are twenty miles per hour. So it is doing its job. But it is, it is, it's deficient because the little ramso on both sides, I, I could share a picture with you if, if, if I have the ability to, to share. I put that in a report.
Yeah, it's okay. I just, as long as it stays there, you know? I mean, I slow down for it. And apparently the rest of the town does too, so.
Yep, but it is, again, it is deficient. You know, a normal speed hump is twelve feet wide. But now you have another six to eight feet of asphalt on both sides. So you're creating a really large speed hump essentially. But it is flat. So I, I would I would support if, when you do the other speed humps that I, that I checked. Again, I personally checked them all. You know, and I, and I provided EJ a asphalt contractor, which, which I've used in other communities nearby that, that have provided really good pricing. You know, when you're doing the other four or other three or four, it would make sense to repair that. And, and as I said in the report, I, I, I think I was misquoted to say that slower speeds are not good. All I was saying in the report is the speeds are posted twenty and our observations were twenty miles per hour that technically you don't need to change the speed hump, but at the same time, it's a maintenance thing. If you wanted to do it, you can do it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Right, Debbie?
What does it cost to repair that speed hump?
It really depends if you do all three or four, and you have some patchwork on a few of them. They are about two, two thousand to three thousand range. Because you have to remove the one that's there and you have to remove the patchwork on both sides. I would say that particular one is about four thousand. And again, EJ has, and I can give you other contractors too. You can, you can they, they'll easily give you a price proposal to do the work.
Thank you.
Rohit, any questions?
So my, my question is perhaps to you and to EJ. What do you need from us today? Does, does there need to be a council decision on all of these things that are in your report, your report and traffic group support or what, what, what are we, where are we going?
Yes, the only four things that really the council, I would need council approval to move forward on, since you've already had, you already approved the signs and everything, is the forty-eight seventeen Dorset speed hump, the rumble strips on Dorset, implementation of high visibility ladder style crosswalks at Warwick Lane, Cumberland and Devon Dorset. And the addition of a street light at Warwick.
All right, so I'll, I'll make it very quick. I think I'm in favor of all four of those, restoring the forty-eight seventeen Dorset speed hump. Restoring the, the rumble strips. My only question regarding the rumble strips is, if I read correctly, Paul, your, your email or your report is that it might make more sense to move it, move them a little bit back from the intersection.
Correct.
That, that it's too close to the intersection to really have the most effect. That that it's too close to the intersection to really have the most effect.
Correct. Um, it it really needs to, it needs to do the job a little further back and I could provide EJ with a sketch for that.
That'd be great. So I'm in favor of the rumble strips being redone. Perhaps relocated a bit further than the intersection. Uh, a street light at that at that intersection, a high visibility and everything exhibits one and two from their report, so.
So we can put that on the council agenda.
Right.
So the three of you want to put that on the agenda? Okay.
Um, one other question. You discovered many of our signs cracked, dirty, et cetera.
Yes. So uh, I've, I'm sorry, go you.
Uh, I mean, the thing is that, so you go away and then ten years later, you come back and tell us our signs are cracked and dirty again. Now, what kind of schedule should the town do to review the signs to make sure they stay visible?
I will check with the, um, Shannon Baum is doing the the sign replacements and you know, those the, they did the first half of the community and they're providing a proposal to EJ for the southern side. Um, and I believe uh Shannon Baum was your contractor ten, twelve, thirteen years ago. They may have been the same contractor that installed. Um, and I can, I'd be happy to have a conversation with them on the town's behalf. Because I'm really surprised that the sheeting has cracked. Um, and we provided Shannon Baum with photographs of all the signs. Um, and and there has been advancements in sheeting and and sign technology, so the next batch of signs, which again, we've done all around the school and things. Um, the next batch may last you more, maybe fifteen to twenty years, but but I can provide EJ that information.
All right, that's what I'm looking for. It's it's just, we don't want it to get into that situation again.
Agree.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. We're gonna go on now to the discussion on the Duberry report, the sidewalk and street improvements. Uh, report and um a Duberry representative is here.
Yes, two of them, uh, Anthony Bedmark and Kevin Matt.
So who would like to summarize the 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 report as it stands? Now, just again, two or three minute summary of what I think there.
Kevin, do you want to go ahead and and give us short just uh explanation, I guess, of the report to the to the folks? Kevin is the one that uh prepared the report.
All right.
I hear you, Kevin.
Kevin, you're muted still?
Okay, there it is. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, we uh we we revised the the uh report and proposal to to sync up with the the three plus three plus one methodology that was discussed the last time. And have divided all of the uh the elements into those and and so those can be uh they they're kind of kind of like a menu, really. There you can mix and match them. You don't have to do them all at the same time. But each one of those items uh can be done independently uh depending on the uh the budgeting uh constraints. So the 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 first one that we had was, of course, the the intersection at uh Cumberland and Surrey where the steps are. Uh, that one's gonna be probably the most complicated one because of the the grade difference in the retaining walls that are there. Uh, the second one is the uh making the sidewalk connection that's missing at Deal and Cumberland. Third one is the uh fixing the steep grade at the end of the sidewalk uh on Essex uh to bring that down into a safer configuration. And then the the other three are the overall um going through the town and replacing all of the uh uh the curbs uh as they are today with a with new uh six inch high curb and gutter uh to replace where you've got a lot of curbs that are over the years have gotten um paved in front of them, so they're down to two, three inches in some places high. As part of that work, then that would also include the uh um taking a look at the grades between the sidewalk and the curb. And that is, once you, once you raise the curb height, then we'll have to fill in the space behind it and we take a look at fixing the uh any places where there are drop offs with the uh uh next to the sidewalk. Uh, that also um can be done simply by, you know, that doesn't have to be part of any kind of design work uh on for that work. It's really just a kind of a performance spec. Uh, the town could have a contractor go at any time and and fill and do some grading around the worst places on the sidewalks uh to fix the uh the hazardous drop offs there. The uh the second element of the second three, uh or actually the last element of this of the three would be the uh uh replacing all of the uh handicap ramps throughout the town uh to make those all in compliance. It there's, there's a lot of uh newer ramps that are in the town, so the step one on that would be to go through and actually confirm whether they are uh in compliance. And if if they are, there's no reason to do anything with them. And it, but if they're not in compliance, we would go in and do whatever designed to to update them as well. And then the third, the the last element was the 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 plus one, which was to have a a community um presentation slash design charrette uh to um focused on just on the uh the design opportunities and constraints of with involved with extending the sidewalk along Cumberland to the west end of the town. Um, and we would look at um all the uh the the opportunities and constraints and then have a presentation to the uh community uh which would then become um a a design charrette where we would welcome any input from the citizenry. The um to make sure that everyone is happy and understands what's needed to be done and and that we've done as much as possible to minimize the any adverse effects of that that work, because there it will be a significant impact to the front yards of the residents along that run. Um, so that's basically what it is.
Thank you very much. All right, so it's time now for our questions of um the Duberry staff. And Rohit, you want to go first?
Um, yes, well, I mean, I I my question is really, uh again, more a discussion point for us is just to understand what is the budget and how by when do we need to spend the ARPA money and just for me to understand where we are. Because certainly to understand the context before really diving into this.
Um, so for ARPA, we have about six hundred thousand uh remaining of the ARPA funds. And they have to be spent by in calendar year twenty twenty six, so December the first twenty twenty six.
Can I just jump in here?
Yeah.
Just that, are we not concerned that maybe this ARPA money will disappear with our new administration?
Uh, no, actually, just because it benefit, it would only benefit every state in local government in the country, so it'd be even for him, it would be.
Hasn't stopped them yet. Okay.
I must have missed some of the news items, but there's been no, uh, we've been kind of watching. There hasn't been any news.
That concerns me. No, I think the sooner we spend our money, the better.
Yeah, the closest thing that's happened so far is that they basically sent a letter saying, you better spend the money, else we'll take it back.
Okay.
They have to try to uh premature it.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, so uh and uh again, just to go back, so from going on here, what is the process? We need to come back to a council meeting to give you the green light to proceed with various components here, phases here? Is that what we're looking at? So.
Yeah, the approved uh it is a big part of the proposal.
Right, and it seems to be that we could do any any of any of the pieces off, we don't need to do all at once.
Okay, understand.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, so I mean, I think that uh yeah, no, I mean, first of all, I want to thank you very much. I think the 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 report now has, you know, everything I feel I need to to start making some informed decisions regarding uh all the different components. So thanks very much for having your your design and consulting fees as well as ballpark of what the construction will be. So I think uh from my perspective, uh you know, what 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 I would like, uh maybe just to get a sense from you, Kevin, is if you were in our shoes, how would you prioritize this list of things in front of us? Because we have to prioritize and we have, we have, we can't do everything all at once. We can do, you know, listen, what what do you, from what you've seen so far, what what would you, how would you rank them?
Um, I I think that I would put the the um the Cumberland and Deal sidewalk as the probably the first. It's it's the the that and the Essex sidewalk are very, very discreet elements can be done very quickly. Um, and are relatively lower cost than all the other ones. The uh, the the next one that I would look at is probably to uh the going through all the handicap ramps at the intersections. Uh, cause again, even at those we can kind of look at those independently from each other themselves as well. Yeah, as I said, the first thing to do is to look at uh what's out there and find out how many of those uh was it uh twenty eight ramps that need to be, that that are not compliant. Um, there's probably um and just looking at uh what's there and and some spot checks that I did when I was out there. There's probably four or five of them that are perfectly fine. We don't have to do anything with them, so we just cross them off the list. The uh, the other ones, we can do one intersection at a time as well. To to tailor it to any budget constraints. Uh, obviously, things are cheaper, the 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 more you do in bulk, the better prices you're gonna get from the contractors. But if if there's a limit, then then you can break it into two phases or whatever as well. The um the 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 biggest one is going to be the um uh the the curb, the general curb replacement. Um, and again, it it's a, it's a total amount. It is a very large number. But again, uh, the the rules from the public right of way access guides and other requirements, they they don't make you spend money you don't have. So you you can do as much as you can under each of that those and with that one, because there's uh with the curb replacement, uh we're proposing to do a um a a performance spec for the contractor rather than create drawings specifically to a point on the road. And that way, they can take that, the contractor can take that performance spec and apply it to whatever length. You could do one street at a time, for example, rather than the entire town. The, I know the, everyone focuses on the intersection at Surrey and Cumberland. Cause it's, it's a very easy one to spot as a as a troublesome part. Uh, but it's also gonna be a very complicated and expensive solution um because of that retaining wall that runs in front of it. The uh, wait, there there's a variety of things that can be done to to deal with the retaining wall, anywhere from trying to shore it up and underpin it to tearing it down and replacing it or tearing it down and putting in a two to one slope or three to one slope behind it. Personally, I'm not in favor of that one because that will um be the most disruptive. Um, and then that that beautiful tree that's behind the wall would would not survive doing a a layback. But it's within the, it's within the uh town's right of way, so we could do whatever needs to be done on there. So that one, I I think when you're trying to figure out where your big best bang for your buck is, I think that's the probably one of the lower priority ones. Uh, you can get, you can get more effect and more uh townwide coverage from the other uh elements.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, uh Rohit, uh thank you Rohit. Uh, Dan on for Debbie.
Karen. I I did have one. Um, I I think I might have missed a piece when you were making your initial report when you said that some of this work was going to affect, oh, sorry. Some of this work is going to affect uh homeowners. And I guess to their their yards. Did I get that straight?
Uh, yes, what what the 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 situation we have and and it's it's most prevalent on Cumberland uh on the west end is that the uh the effective front yards that have been developed over the last hundred and plus years have extended into the public right of way up to the sidewalk. So there's about a eight to ten foot wide portion of what people have been thinking is their front yard, which is not actually their front yard. It's the right of way. And so any work that we do in there with where there's a lot of uh topography change. Um, there we will have to be very mindful of the effect that that change in topography to make the improvements. Um, how far that goes into what is the perceived front yard as opposed to the actual property of the adjacent properties.
So two points. One is to do what you have to do. It sounds like it is necessary to go into the perceived uh land of of our residents. And the second part really is for EJ is what homework do we have to do to let the residents know when we get to that point, it's not their land. And are we expecting pushback from that?
That's that's the whole point of the charrette. And that's one of the reasons why Duberry has recommended the idea of a charrette, which is where you put all these issues on the table. And a community gets together and discusses all these kinds of issues with some options brokered by Duberry. Saying, you know, here are the pros of this, here are the cons of that. And you know, we see where we come out. That's sort of what a charrette is, to try to resolve what could be a very thorny, difficult conversation.
Well, I've discussed this with EJ in the past and 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 uh hopefully Duberry can weigh in because does it, what are the procedures in some of these jurisdictions that you've worked with that in 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 some jurisdictions, isn't there a law that that a certain percentage of the block has to agree anyway, whether they want the sidewalk? Isn't that, but what is it, isn't that the case in Montgomery County? If if an, if a street requires, it requests, uh some people on a street want a sidewalk. Are there some some procedures in place?
I don't know that they have a.
Or in DC, in DC.
Yeah, I don't know that that Montgomery County or or Prince George's have any particular set guideline. They do take citizen input. Um, and if there's enough sufficient pushback, uh, they they will consider not doing it. Uh, yeah.
And but don't they, don't they consult? And, but don't they, don't they consult first the? You, the affected. Homeowners as opposed to, you know, because obviously this is for the good of our citizens and our visitors. But, but, uh, in most of these places, they, i- if it's violently opposed by the homeowners, then they probably don't proceed, right?
Yeah, I, I would say that's correct, but there's not a, there's not a, uh, specific formula or anything.
So, so maybe, so maybe our council can decide, how do you want to, do you, do you want us to contact that? How many? How many landowners does that affect? I mean, I think the council should decide what is the process. Because you don't want to start doing all this and then find out that every landowner there is violently opposed to it. No, no, but, but you don't want to.
Also want to confirm, Mr. Mayor, whether there's adequate space available or whether you would need. Construction and, and permanent easements potentially.
I don't want to, I don't know that you want to spend money on a charrette until you, you make sure there is a violent opposition.
Poor, poor me, I just want to get through the meeting, okay?
Yeah, but you, but you, but you can't move forward on this unless you decide how you're gonna do it.
What, what we've heard.
Dump it on stat.
What we've heard is that we can proceed with. Any one of the three plus three plus one or any combination of them initially. And that, I think, is a vital piece of information for our council meeting coming up. Where we can make decisions on how to move.
Yes, I think. I think that it would be good, I mean, I don't know how we want to structure it for the council meeting coming up. And I think that, uh, Kevin has provided us a good framework for prioritization. I think that. Like, my, my suggestion would be for the upcoming council meeting to essentially have before us. The two easy ones, Cumberland, Deal and Essex. You know, have the full package of that, uh, for our consideration. Regarding Cumberland and Surrey. Look, I mean, this was considered by the pedestrian safety working group as the highest priority problem. Even more than the other two. So, uh, so I think that. I think we should at least try to go ahead and start doing some of the surveying to get a sense. Uh, of really what's feasible and what a design might look like there because maybe there's a lot of. There's quite a lot of work that still needs to be done. So my suggestion is at least to get, uh, some of the initial survey work done. On Cumberland and Surrey, um, and, uh, and. And figure out, you know, whether it's even worth moving forward with the design phase. But I think on Cumberland, Deal and Essex, we should go ahead with, with what is being proposed.
Rohit, that, that's material for the council meeting. Well, we'll, we'll get the other council members things on it too. Um, I had a couple of questions myself. You're also doing, uh. A plan for replacing the bridge. And I've heard from EJ that there's progress in that plan. Can you give me your own timeline for when you think the plan will be submitted?
Uh, that would be Anthony's question.
Correct. Um, so just some clarification, as EJ laid out in the very beginning. Um, we talked about three options. One was full replacement, which is off the table due to the. Costs for that. The second option we talked about was to do a superstructure replacement only, which would be essentially the bridge beams and deck. However, there is no historical documents or design drawings of the substructure, which is the abutments and the foundation. So that. We also moved off the table. And what we landed on and where we are currently heading. Is to provide a rehabilitation plan. Um, we're, we're. Basically, we're putting the proposal, we're revising the proposal to show, um. What it would take to do beam end repairs, um, along with some of the other miscellaneous items that were on there. And we were going to get that over to EJ, um, month, um, I believe, two weeks' time. I know that that's been a concern to town and that's something that you guys wanted pretty quickly, you know, we, we are working on it. Unfortunately, we had some other. Uh, fires that we had to put out. Now, um.
You're kind of, you're cutting out, Anthony.
Yeah, my computer just went all blank, so I don't know if you guys can hear me, sorry. So, as, I, I don't know where I got cut off, but we are working on getting. Uh, the revised proposal before the end of the month. And like I said, that's gonna focus on the, uh, rehabilitation repairs. One of the things that we were just talking about is doing, um, or seeing if you can get the timber deck. Ice with, having to have design drawings if we do a like-for-like and we are inquiring about that. So that might help. Um, expedite some of the town's concerns with the, I think you guys might be able to just hire a contractor. That can go out there and, and replace the timber deck, uh, like-for-like. And we would still obviously be working on the.
Rehabilitation plan, yeah. All right, thank you. That, that, that's helped. Uh, the other question I had related to the report, um, and this is about when you are putting in sidewalks. Um, are you going to try to match the sidewalk with, to the sidewalks that are around the site you're working on? Are you using a design guideline of at least four feet, which is required?
Yes, what we would do is we would bring up any, any new sidewalks we do. Uh, especially at the, at the curb intersections. Uh, we would bring those into compliance with the current, uh, public right of way guidelines. Uh, to have a minimum of four feet and where we can. Uh, and, and where it's desirable, go out as much as, uh, five feet or six, six feet wide.
All right.
And, and we would, we would look at what the optimal is so that in future. When the side, the rest of the sidewalks get upgraded. That they can just dovetail right into what the work that's being done now. So it wouldn't have to have any rework done later.
Right, that, that includes the Cumberland, um.
Yes.
sidewalk, because that's the one that is most difficult and.
Yes.
And you still want to do that there.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you. Um, any last questions?
So what's coming to the council in October? This package is coming back to us?
We, we have decisions to make on which projects we want to move forward on. And, uh, we should move forward on those projects, get, these are basically to get designs for the work so that a contractor can be hired to do the work. So there's, there's gonna be the designs that we're moving forward on.
Hopefully quick question. Concerning the bridge. Is it possible that the fix on the bridge is as easy as? Replacing the decking of it and then as one project and then as another project bolstering up the, um, supports?
Yeah, that's what we're actually looking at doing now.
So it might be as easy? I, I know that sounds silly.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, um, once, uh, the actual engineers get back to me, uh, according to council. But yes, we are looking at, it would be possible to go ahead and do the decking now quite quickly, like.
I, I have a last question of, of the engineers then, which is that the current bridge is flat across. Uh, most bridges have a curve, about a three percent camber on, on them from the center upwards for water to run off. And any redesign, is that what you're looking for?
Standing water has been a problem with the bridge.
Right, and that's because it's flat.
Yeah, exactly. This should definitely be resolved.
Anthony, you've got you, but, uh, while you're figuring that out, I will just say too, uh, yes, part of the, um. Repairs that would be done is addressing the runoff drainage situation.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, that, we're gonna finish the Duberry discussion at this point, um, and. We're going to move on to the discussion on the public safety memorandum concerning use of cameras. So, um.
And, uh, Sam Splain of Splain Security Systems is here. As the, as a resident security, uh, camera person.
All right.
Can you answer your question?
Thank you. Lost his name for the moment. Public Safety Chair on.
So we're. Currently one of your security contractors. Most recently, we put cameras in over the pool. Thinking you all might wanna expand that to some other areas. So, tell me what your thoughts are.
Can I open it up to questions from, thoughts from different council members first?
Well, I think that, uh, our public safety committee, um, really, you know, just wants to make sure that. You know, we really are thoughtfully, um. Identifying any potential issues or, um. Problems or whatnot in regards to us like putting cameras up. So I don't know if you have like. Documents or like best practices in terms of, um, you know. How, how we can like avoid, um. You know, any potential misuse of these recordings or, you know, whatever is being viewed.
Misuse to be whoever had access to the recording.
Right.
In which case. When we set up a system, you were the ones that had access to the recordings and it's. Passcode protected, nobody else will be able to get into those. You can change the passcode, you can, you know, control it yourselves. You also, the way we've got you set up is it's locally recorded. Um, so whoever sets up your network. If you have firewalls in your network, they're not gonna be able to get into the recorder. The recorder is hosted locally by you. It's not hosted outside. By another source, it's not posted in the cloud. So unless they hack into your network, it's gonna be harder to get into that recorder to retrieve data. But the information that you're primarily reporting is public view also. You know, except for what's inside your offices here. If it's outside the perimeter of the office, it's. Viewing the public areas. And I don't really think that's an issue. Uh, your attorney can advise you on that sort of thing.
Who watches the videos though?
That's the key. You're not really watching it all day long. It's basically recording the information. And the information is there, so if you have an incident, you can go back and review it. You don't have a security staff. You don't have security guards. You don't have a security control room with, with security people watching these cameras. So what you really want to do is collect the data, put it into, um, a recording and have it there in storage for review. Normally, normally we have things set up for up to thirty days, it can be longer. If you want cloud recording, you can have cloud recording. We're not a big fan of cloud recording. But there are other backup measures that you can have locally. So if some of your system fails, you have to back it up that system. But, you know, cameras are everywhere today. You can't go anywhere without being watched, it seems like. So it's up to you and your town, how you want to utilize those cameras. Uh, to give you an example, we do cameras for the town of Kensington. They have some remote parks in the town of Kensington that we have cameras on watching those parks. No one's watching the cameras. The cameras are there. They're a deterrent. They prevent the kids from doing stupid stuff in the park. But if something does happen, they can go back and review it. Um, one of the things that I would maybe suggest as time goes on. Is to probably have a monitor here in the office that's constantly on up on a wall. That in someone's office, if they would see it every day, they'll know what's going on. They would know that every camera is in working order. They would know if they walked in that day, if camera number three is not on, they could call for service. But, um, it's good to have a monitor on all the time so that you're constantly checking your cameras. Your cameras, you can have access by telephone, cell phone. You can decide who you want to give that access to. But again, ultimately, it's up to you as to how you manage your cameras.
Thank you very much, um. Debbie.
One of the things that I was reading, uh, uh, our internal document committee saying that. We're gonna let everybody know where all the cameras are. So is, is that, is that the way you would suggest that? To me, it makes me think, I don't want to tell everybody. The cameras are there, so they dock them or whatever.
Do you want to think of it more as a deterrent? If they know it's there, you're not gonna have a problem?
I don't know.
If you're trying to catch somebody, yes, you don't want them to know it's there. If we, if we have a problem in a certain area and we want to catch them, fine, we're gonna put up a camera, try to make it as sweet as possible. And watch that area until something happens. But if you're trying to just observe an area that could be a problem, I wouldn't think that you wanna. Not tell people that it's there. You could say we're putting cameras here, we're putting cameras there. I don't think you want to hide them, especially in public views.
So I, I think that like, one of the things was maybe like at the pool, we didn't have enough cameras. Or like there were hidden parts, like that you couldn't see.
Views, that's why I had Sam come in. Those cameras weren't gonna go away or just. Those were ADT cameras.
Oh.
Those are gonna go away. So.
Okay, and so all of that areas.
Like here, this.
Only have three cameras viewing the pool.
I see, so we have two cameras that's at the pool.
So will, will we be able to have like, you know. If, if someone hops a fence and, you know, like on the far perimeter of the pool, we would be able to see every, all of that through those cameras?
Currently, yes. That's what we set it up for. Someone comes over the fence, then it's gonna pick them up and record it. It's also set up to have a deterrent that a light comes on, to sort of say, hey, we're watching you. Uh, and hopefully they'll go back over the fence.
Right.
Um, but that's what it's intended to do, and we want it to be visible.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, um. A few questions, um. One is, I'm assuming these cameras don't have facial recognition technology in there.
You can have that.
You can, but they, but they can choose not to.
You can choose not to. The analytics that's in some of the reporters can be very detailed, but it doesn't have to be turned on.
Who, where, when you said there was, this was not necessarily the cloud. So where are the copies maintained and, like, who controls the copies of the record?
Currently, it goes into the recorder's hard drive. And if you want to play back, then Mr. Williams has the ability to go in there and play back data on.
Okay.
Scan.
Okay. And, um, I guess my, my main question regarding the swimming pool is. Are the, are the cameras that you would propose that are just for the perimeter? The, the, the perimeter cameras, are there not cameras at the pool?
The cameras, kind of, they're looking at the water of the pool, those, the swimming area. So as they come, oh, she didn't show it to you.
Yeah.
As they come over the fence, all around the pool deck. On all sides of the pool.
Okay.
So they're mounted on the perimeter facing in, into the pool area.
I mean, I think we, I need to, I mean, I, I need to think a little bit myself about the privacy concerns. About people having cameras with their kids or whatever at the pool. Um, it's one thing to have cameras for surveillance for the fence, for the perimeter. Uh, it's quite another for cameras to be directed at the swimming pool itself, at the deck itself. And, you know, are people comfortable with that or not? Because they, it does raise some sensitivity and privacy concerns about.
Why don't you ask the professional about how that works in other places?
I've not had any complaints. I don't know if you've had any calls. People are becoming sort of immune to this privacy issue when they expect to be out in public. That they expect to be watched, that they expect to be seen. Every day when you watch the news. Something's on the news and it shows you your neighbor's ring camera showing the suspect walking down the street. Uh, it's sort of become part of the norm.
And I think, I think our town attorney has addressed that too. Didn't you say that in an earlier meeting that, that?
Didn't you say that in an earlier meeting that, that now that's, there's not really any liability?
Yeah, I would, I would agree, Mr. Mayor. As the gentleman previously stated, in, in public areas, there's generally no reasonable expectation of, of privacy.
Yeah. So does that satisfy you?
It satisfies me. The question is whether it satisfies, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I think, like, you know, like, I just feel like, you know, with kids, it's becoming just so much more with all the A I. It's all the things that people are just more worried about kids.
Yeah, I think, I think.
It's up to all of you. I mean, you're, you're getting professional information. You all decide.
Yeah. I mean, the, the security camera policy is gonna come back for discussion subsequent council meetings, so.
Right.
This is good information to have. I, I have some concerns about that, so it's, it's good to know what others are doing. Then my last question is, so who, is it always just one person who is assigned to monitor it or all staff?
That would be your decision. You have to decide who's gonna be allowed to have access to the video recordings.
So it's more like us, you know, figuring out who blocks that down and what we do with it, you know, all those things.
What is it currently, just so?
Mainly, when does the main point person for the security?
Because the whole point is, God forbid, that someone climbs that fence, which we had that issue, that they don't come in and find a deceased kid in that pool or something. If we did just kind of, you know, cameras there and purchase or find that's.
Yeah, I've seen, also more of us finding that's. All right. Too, but all right, we'll ask the, our attorney, Ron, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, just real quickly, a gentleman noted that there's a password protection option. So is there an application, software that helps the town manage this, that we could, we could dictate who has access to the password?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay.
You could actually assign passwords by person.
Ah, okay.
To different people who have a different password. So if you lost that person who's a council member, you can erase their password and not affect other passwords.
Oh, great. Thank you for that. All right. Here's a real quick, Mr. Chair, the, the P S E has submitted a memo with, you know, a whole list of, of proposed edits for the policy.
Right, we were, right. Getting expert advice at the moment. Questions? We, we were planning on cameras, replacing cameras at the pool, cameras at the tennis courts and cameras at the town hall. That's the areas. At the pool, because we've had teenagers basically climbing the fence at night. We use the pool, the tennis courts, because we've got unauthorized use of the tennis courts and just general security concerns at the town hall. At the pool, most of the incidents are at night. You mentioned there's a light that will turn on when they're there. Is the light sensitive to any access from any point on the fence all around the pool?
It's only going to be affected by the camera's field of view. In other words, the cameras are up against the fence right now, looking into the pool and pool deck.
Right.
So when you're on the fence itself in, in particular locations, you're not gonna see the person on the fence. When they come over the fence and start to walk out onto the pool deck, then they will be visible and the lights can come on.
All right, and with the lights on, the camera was effective, I mean, it was going.
The camera's always effective. It's recording twenty-four seven.
No, but if it's dark, is it able?
They switch over to night vision.
And they can do it.
And the lights will come on and be a visible deterrent.
One night with the new council, they had their event. And I had Sean send them back to my wall, but they still went off, which was kind of good that we were able to able to find out what happened. So the, the lights flashed, written for, and then you have a report that says, please leave this area.
Yes.
All right.
So.
Okay, good, good. Okay, thanks. All right, thank you. Any, any more questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Can we find out from Sheriff Osmani if he is wanting to talk about the policy just now or?
He has his hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. About the draft policy, where did that come from? What's it based on?
It was.
It's based on a policy from the Village of Friendship Heights. Okay, thank you. Did you make any changes to it before you submitted it to the town?
No, I, I gave it to the town as an example.
Okay, thank you. Just real quick, I don't wanna hold up the meeting, but I think that policy is very flawed. I think that it did not ensure that the Village of Friendship Heights was obeying the law. And that's based upon a statement that Justin Mansfield, Mansfield made at a, a public meeting at the Village of Friendship Heights and Councilmember Salt raised concerns about that as well. I want you to know, I did not submit edits for that policy. I raised concerns about. And frankly, I think we should use a policy that is both ensures the, that the privacy rights of residents are protected as well as make sure that the cameras actually work and that the staff is held accountable for their use. And we're gonna go into this in great detail on September thirtieth at the Public Safety Committee meeting. And I invite, I invite you all to attend.
Well, I if, I think it'll be good if you, you extensive comments of it. That's the role of the committee. We don't, we don't need you.
Yeah, I mean, you know what? Personally, I think that policy is a non-starter and we have to start with something else.
That's, well, that's which, that's the role of the committee. Just please, yeah, what Jeffy's saying is please share it with committee and give committee feedback to us before the October meeting. And then, I think Ron wanted to say something.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I, I, I'm hoping the town attorney can attend our meeting as well, because I've got serious concerns about that.
Well, you, but you, he doesn't need, no, no, you, your concerns are valid, but you submit them to the council.
Okay, well, thank you, but I would urge you not to move quickly on this.
I don't think we ought.
To prove that.
I don't think we are, are we moving quickly? No, we're, we are not moving quickly. I don't, I don't think there's any, there, there's no, I don't think the council, you know, the purpose of the work session is to decide what goes on the council meeting, and I don't think that the, that, that's gonna be on the agenda for a decision based on, right? Does anybody wanna put it on the agenda? I, not at the moment, no. So there you go. It's still pending. All right. Mr. Chair, don't worry about it.
Thank you, but you said submit comments by the October meeting, that's what.
It, it, well, that would be great if you can do that. I'm not sure we're gonna have it on the agenda for the October meeting. It's not gonna be on the agenda, cause nobody wants it on the agenda. But. So we'll hope to get at least a twenty-page treatise from you.
Eventually.
It would be good if we also have the pool committee. Any other committee that wants to look at it, please do it in parallel with, because we don't need.
Okay, we will, we will send it to all the relevant committees, tennis, pool. Newcomers, equity, all of them. Mahjong.
Is a Mahjong committee now?
The Mahjong ad hoc committee, a legal, a legal committee.
I think they're important. We invite out who's cheating in Mahjong to the cameras.
Right. Let's move on, shall we? We're way behind time, okay?
Gotta have some fun, Rob.
Yes, I know. Discussion on ordinances, I'm hoping we can save time here, cause we've all seen these ordinances for. First one up is the discussion on a proposed resolution to amend the permit fee and activity schedules. We have debated these in work session at least twice. Does anybody have any comments at this time on it?
Yeah, it's time to move forward.
Okay.
I have just one question. The previous draft had a fee for food truck, which I don't see.
Yes, I, I forgot that in my report. So the reason for that is the pool committee has asked that it be removed, and so basically, this is a new draft that are removed, and the council needs to discuss if they were going to follow the pool committee recommendation ever removed or keep it in for introduction.
This is a two fifty deposit for food trucks?
Yes.
Why? Well, I don't, what is the pool committees?
Why would we remove this? We already discussed.
What, what, I mean, what's, what's the issue with the pool? Let, let Debbie talk to it.
You know, the, the, the pool committee is, is, is trying to make the pool fun in the summer. Part of that fun is a food truck. It, it's more than fun. It helps out people off to rush all for dinner, that kind of thing. And they feel that a fee is gonna be a hindrance to getting food trucks, and I agree with that.
But do, have you, have we asked any of the food trucks? They understand that it's not a fee, it's a deposit?
Yeah. It's a deposit, a two fifty deposit.
It's a deposit and, and have, I doubt any, I mean, I think that, that if this is proposed, then we should make sure that all the potential food trucks know about it and they can come and testify against it.
Well, I mean, like really with the two fifty deposit, like I think it's only just for if they leave all their trash and like, you know, if they leave it.
We, we, we do that in the town hall. I, I don't, I don't think the pool committee understood the fee, because it probably wasn't explained properly by the chair.
Pay us two, two fifty just to be there.
They get their money back.
Yeah, so deposit. Just, it's just. Refundable deposit.
Yeah.
Not a non-refund.
Just like, just like we require at the town hall for use of the town hall. Because there've been so many complaints about the, the impact.
I mean, I'm, I'm prepared to discuss a lower number, but I think as a matter of principle, I think we should have a deposit.
Well, how much is the deposit for the? Well, we, we, we argued about it last time. We came up with two fifty. I mean, that, that was.
Exactly right, so.
All right, so let's put it back in.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, and just, I'll ask, since it's a resolution, it could be introduced and adopted at the same time? Is that what the council is wanting?
That, absolutely. Three of us need to agree to that, so.
Yes.
Two. Okay. Okay, the next one is discussion on the post, post ordinance require real property sale disclosure regarding town regulations. And again, we've gone over this at work session. Are there comments on it?
I'm happy with it.
Wait, where are we?
Real property sale disclosure regarding town regulations.
I'm happy to move forward with it.
Me too.
All right, I, I have a couple of wordsmithing things, Ron, which I'll give you offline.
Okay.
And the, should the one also for rental?
Lease addendum?
That's next. Definitely. This guy, artist. Okay, so on the rental policy, again, it's the same, it's, it's written now for landlords. And are there any questions on that one?
Yes, I have a wordsmithing thing, but I was told by the town attorney that unlike you, I don't have the power to send wordsmithing changes to him. And that is the paragraph on parking says the town allows parking only on the right side of each street. Which I think is not, A, not accurate and B, quite confusing. Because it's not on the right side of each street.
No.
And I presume when you say right, you don't mean correct. But anyway, it, it, the, the, so it's, that is, if it's not, it's not on the right side of each street.
So you need just to clarify, north or south?
I, it, it's inconsistent throughout the time.
How about the sign in the street where the signs are?
Yeah, I think the town has parking restrictions of some kind.
You brought it up, let Ron answer how he wants.
Ron can do the wordsmithing. I, I don't want to get into it, like committee over here.
Well, yeah, no, it, it should be accurate. If it's not accurate, it's always the right side.
Because you, you know, I will, I will leave it to you to work out the correct terminology. You don't need to.
And so, again, are we happy?
So we can't word, I had to bring it up in the meeting.
For these two.
So would it be, would it be accurate to say for certain streets, parking is allowed on only one side of the street? Are there any streets where?
In, in, throughout the town, parking is only allowed on one side of the street. The issue is that it can vary which side it is.
So as you could say, on the street that has the no parking signs, that would be a good place to start.
Anyway, Ron, I'm sure that you can find an elegant solution to that.
And so for these two ordinances, we're happy that they be introduced at the October meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, okay. Next one is the ordinance to amend the court of ordinances to prevent parking in a certain portion of Cumberland Avenue. This one's a very simple one. It is. You got some question?
I, I, I do, I do.
I do too.
I do.
Okay.
It's simple, but I have some questions.
All right.
My, my, as I, as I read through it, I wondered, because I couldn't visualize it sitting in my house. What is this? How is this gonna impact parking on Cumberland? Will there be enough parking for, for residents to park and to have guests? Are we taking away a lot of parking?
They're doing one space.
One space.
One space where? Out of four, seven, or seven Cumberland?
By, it's by where we?
Yeah, but just to be clear, let me try. There's a yellow, there's a, there's a yellow painted curb halfway in front of four, seven, or seven. And if you're taking away one more space, four, seven, or seven Cumberland will have no parking in front of their house. I don't know if they're listening or not, but that's what's gonna happen. I just want, I just wanna understand where this space is going. There is only space for one car now in front of that house. That is where it is, would be. So.
I think if, when this moves forward, a picture should, a photo should be.
Yes, that would be great.
Well.
I don't think we have any residents and any homeowner here who has no parking in front of their house.
It is, it is a safety recommendation.
I know, I'm, and I am.
We do have, we do have some. We have some, endorse it. There, there's some people that have no parking in front of their house.
I would like to see a picture of this, okay? Because as I read through it, it was a little confusing. I don't know why, but it was to me. So if we had a picture at the, at the meeting, that would help us, I think, speed through it.
I, so I guess I thought that we were talking about, maybe this is different, like having more restrictive parking on Little Cumberland.
That's separate, that's a whole separate, separate discussion. This is, this is a recommendation from the traffic group? Yes.
Okay.
Saying that basically, correct or wrong, it basically says that it will improve visibility at that intersection, if there was no parking at all in front of four, seven, or seven. Yes.
Okay.
Now, here's the thing, I fully agree with you on our safety. The, 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 the paradox here is that if you actually avoid this problem, if you, if you simply remove the vegetation. This, this car has to go because the vegetation gets to stay.
Where's the vegetation?
Because the retaining wall and the vegetation is so high there, that, that there's no visibility. That's basically what the traffic group is saying.
This Little Cumberland?
But I thought that.
This is the big Cumberland. But anyway, I, I'm fine moving it forward. Robin, I'm fine.
But I thought that that guy just said that we really shouldn't have anything over three and a half feet.
You should not.
And so it should just come down.
We have the same problem here. When we, when we go to our left by this, to go to, you know, by the school, to go down the block, they have big trees.
Yeah, that tree as well.
I, I, I would, I would be inclined to vote for this and extend the parking space. And if we do manage to actually train our residents to have nothing over three and a half feet in their yards, and it suddenly is no longer necessary, we can revise the ordinance to take it back again. But right now, we need it for safety at the school.
I agree.
But, so my understanding, and I could be totally off, but like, if you're walking down Cumberland here and then you go left on DL, you're not supposed to park. There's no parking signs that go up all across that DL right there, right? And like, everyone parks there. So like, who is, who would monitor the no parking? And like, can you issue a ticket or like tow people?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I can, I can call it to the teacher, because I can tell people and I can shoot deals.
Oh, I wanna be a little.
You could also get a Montgomery County Police Office to come by occasionally.
They'll never come.
I can just try to get one.
Yeah, well, they, they, they won't come. It's just show their presence, that's all.
And we also, I don't know if it has actually happened, but we have requested to the school, the school also reached out to the community, how to police, to ask for parking enforcement now.
The school also does not do a good job in communicating with the parents, because those are all the violators. And we need to have, we need to have another meeting with those parent, that parent group to discuss the issues. And also, the, the principal has not been cooperative.
Imagine.
Okay.
All right.
So none of these things are really not, I mean, they're not, like, you know, at least in the past, like, nothing, none of these no parking areas have been really enforced.
Not as they should be now.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so do we have three? All right, so do we have three people who want to bring this one forward to the October meeting to be introduced?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, all right. Good. Um, we're almost caught up. We're on to discussion on other topics. Um, and this one is um come up recently. It's this discussion on partnering with the uh DNR Forest Service of Maryland Department of Natural Resources and the creation of a woodland stewardship management plan for Vinson Park, and EJ have all the details on it.
Yes, so in researching the best way to come up with a woodland stewardship management plan for Vinson Park, I actually learned that the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Forest Service will do it. Um, how that process works is um the whatever property your ha owner would have to submit a landowner questionnaire. So in this case, it would be a landowner questionnaire through the council. Uh, it depends on the acreage, but for our acreage, it would be two hundred dollars. Uh, the forest service would come. They would examine the parking person uh taking and then taking their field survey and landowner questionnaire into account. They would produce a woodland stewardship management plan for us. Um, they said that depending on so the they're part of the forest service that does this, they they do this, they kind of oversee Montgomery and Howard Counties. So they said that it really depends on how many are in the pipe because anybody with multiple acres can actually request this. So they said, you know, when I called them, they didn't have any. So they said, I'll only take a month. But, you know, they can kind of average one to two months if they have. And so this would be a way to go that's separate from um a private company.
So this is instead of an RFP.
Instead of instead of RFPing and getting a private company to do it. Um, it would. This would basically take the kind of switching the product over to a different.
Good.
All right.
Go for it.
Any any other questions? Just.
No.
Okay.
Fantastic discovery.
All right, then, like, go ahead. You have the full weight of the council behind you. That was fast. We're ahead of time. I'm excited.
Can we go back to slow down and redo some of the legends?
I want to go back. I have my notes here.
Okay, it's almost got to run time. All right. Uh. So discussion on planning for America's two hundred and fiftieth and Somerset's one hundred and twentieth birthday, which will be in twenty twenty six. So.
And this this uh agenda item was specifically requested by council and so I could introduce it or if you'd like.
Can you introduce something?
All right, so yes, basically, this agenda item is next year is both America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday and Somerset's one hundred and twentieth. And actually, um, last year we passed or the council passed and adopted a resolution that I included in the packet, basically setting off onto uh in support of Maryland's two fifty commission. And so now the plan has come basically to start planning um what uh the town wants to do to celebrate both the country, but a country's birthday, but also our own birthday, our own milestone. Uh, and obviously, the council has various ideas. Uh, one major idea would be establishing a temporary committee to um candidates for this that could be incorporated into next year's budget and.
The way we the way we did for the town's hundredth.
Exemplary birthday.
But let me just add something. So there's a Maryland two fifty commission and the director of it, which a lot of us have met, and she's been in Ocean City last year and this year. Did you meet her? Yeah, and I think she lives in Montgomery County. I don't know. She anyway, she would be happy to come here. I think we should invite her to work session, maybe on Zoom, so she can give some ideas.
Yes. Yeah, I mean.
And and one of her ideas probably will be to have a blue ribbon committee, which I I think will be very exciting and.
Good. Well, I think, I mean, yeah, I think that we should we should put together a committee that covers both both the two fifty and the one twenty. Who don't have multiple committees? Um, I was very fortunate that Paige gave me all the archive documents of every committee from the hundredth, from the seventy fifth, the fiftieth, and so on and so forth. So it's very interesting to see how the town has done in the past.
And I think Paige should be on the committee, too.
There's no question about that. They're persuaded to be on the committee. Um, and so I think at the next council meeting, I hope we can take a decision on on establishing the committee. Maybe already move forward the idea of nominating Paige, lead it.
If she'll agree.
Very good idea to have the chair to fifteen, the two fifty commission.
Great.
All right, any other comments on this one?
It's just a typo in there, which I'll tell you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, the other one might entail a bit more discussion, so I'm going to move it up now, which is the Article Sixty Ethics of the Town Charter and um EJ, do you want to talk about where this has come from and what and why?
Hmm, yes. So this was a proposal that was started uh after discussions of uh I've had with the mayor about kind of basically um and first, I've made mentioned this in my report, uh but just to make sure we're all aware, town attorney hasn't reviewed this yet. Basically, the purpose of the the underwork session now is the town council. Before we ask Ron to take the amount of time that we need to properly review this to see if the council is actually wanting to move forward with this. Um, so Ron has not reviewed it yet, but uh me and America discussions where um unlike many other municipalities, partly due to our size, we do not have any sort of comprehensive ethics policy. Uh, currently, the ethics policy only has two sections, one that requires an oath of office and one that basically says that uh elected officials have to be neutral in carrying out election functions. So this proposed update would greatly expand that section to basically be aligned with what other most uh what other municipalities have, especially in our area. So uh to get kind of big changes is it would establish an ethics commission, which would operate very similarly to the current Board of Supervisors of Elections. Uh, it would require all public officials to complete a disclosure form, basically a complex of interest form. Uh, it would. I don't. I would hope this would never happen, but it would establish a process for ethics complaints and then make some other kind of minor edits. But it's it is a lot.
It's just all best practice, and it doesn't matter how small the government is. It's needed.
Right, it 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 does, though, and people should be aware of this. Give you quite an extensive questionnaire to identify your holdings.
No, we don't. We don't. I don't think you want that.
That's in there.
Yeah, I we it doesn't. We don't have to have it as comprehensive as, you know, Chevy Chase Village. Remember, Mister Town Attorney, Chevy Chase Village, because they have such a big budget with their police force, they require disclosure of all this stuff.
And the town's Chevy Chase.
We we just wanted. We don't. We I don't think we want to have require elected officials to disquire to disclose like their stock holdings and all that.
Well, maybe we should. We should have that discussion.
Why don't you?
But the council, which it it is. If you've got stock holdings, for example, in a construction company and they're bid on working in the town, you're in conflict at that point.
But that's but that's different than because the requirement is just if you do have a conflict, you have to disclose it. It's not that you have to disclose all the stuff in advance.
Right, well, that that's the actually the this is that this particular policy does require you.
Yeah, but that.
And part of the reason for that is I specifically kind of did a more extreme version that way the council.
He just put it all in there.
All right.
So you so you would know. I don't know. Maybe the town attorney wants to comment on this.
Yeah, I could say a few words and try and be very quick. So state law requires a comprehensive ethics ordinance, including financial disclosure among elected officials and um managers, if based on size and operating budget, you have you're at a certain level. So the only two jurisdictions in our area that are above that level are the town of Chevy Chase and Chevy Chase Village. The other municipalities, including Somerset, are exempt from that state law. But that certainly doesn't mean you can't voluntarily have an ethics ordinance. I would agree with the comments made so far. You probably don't want a comprehensive financial disclosure statement. The State Ethics Commission has stated, small jurisdictions often have difficulty attracting people to office, and a comprehensive financial disclosure statement requiring you to disclose you know, stock portfolios, for example, could have a chilling effect on finding candidates for office. But there's a nice middle ground that Village and Martin's Editions has a Conflict of Interest questionnaire. So it's not a financial disclosure statement, but would cover now what the the chair noted. Are you doing any business? Or do you have interests in any companies doing business with the town? That that can be disclosed rather than list all your property holdings, et cetera. That's all I would have to say, Mister Mayor, this time.
So then does that go into like public record?
It would, yes, but the the disclosure statement is a public record.
Oh, yeah, I'm not that interested.
Well, and 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 just just so you know, when when the law, when the law first came out, it was based on a a federal law, and I I remember there was a Washington Post article, you know, see who in Congress has made fi sound financial decisions. So the the financial disclosure statements were being used for a purpose not intended, you know, to to show who's who's smart stock exchange or not, whether they actually had conflict.
Counselor, Rob, it's very simple. It's the only time that it's ever happened with me in twenty five years is that um years ago, one of the pool the pool management company was a tenant in a building that I managed. And so I had it. And so I voluntarily disclosed that, and I didn't vote on it. It's not. It's not. It's not invasive in any way, and and I don't think that anybody would would feel uncomfortable knowing something like that. Would you? You know, for example, if you're, let's say, the place where you work got a contract with the town, would you feel um and would you?
Well, I don't want to be involved.
Right, so you just disclose it. That's all. That's all it means.
It happens at personal levels, too. Um, I mean, when I was in the federal government, it was a case where my wife was part of a bid for a contract in my own institute, and I had to get the heck out of there, basically, so I couldn't vote on it.
You you don't.
That point, that kind of thing.
You don't want to vote against an ethics for the town. Because then someone's going to question that.
Yeah, I think.
Doesn't everybody agree with me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I mean, I think I'm I'm trying to figure out where exactly this goes. It goes in the charter or the code?
Code, what? I would need to talk to this kind of initial draft as in the charter. But if I talk to Ron, I would see.
Ask Ron.
Yeah, I would say it would go in the code. Currently, you have two ethics provisions in in chapter five of your your code, so I would suggest amending that if you wanted to.
So, yeah, I think uh, I mean, I think right now we've got a provision on on uh simply a conflict, just one paragraph of conflict of interest, which is, I think, what is the oath of office. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And the conflict of interest is also.
It's a oath. It's not the oath.
In some way, it applies to committees, too.
Yeah, it's it's a supplemental oath. You have to take the oath of office required by the Maryland Constitution upon taking office, and this this goes a step farther. So this is a second secondary oath, just so that's clear.
I mean, for example, one of the reasons we want to have some ethics reform here is we don't want to have an instance where like, let's take the example of the food trucks. We don't want someone to be recommending a food truck that they have a financial interest in. So it it so it's just really important that we are um doing best practice for for this kind of issue.
I mean, I guess that's fine. I just don't want like to disclose everything and have everything.
You don't have to disclose. No, 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 it doesn't. It's not.
I like, you know, one share of Costco. What if I want Linda to go to Costco?
I don't think that's. I don't think that's. I don't think that's um to that extent.
You can get all the pool snacks from Costco now.
No, no, because that's not a contract you're voting on.
Oh, I'm kidding.
Um, so do we want to establish the ethics commission that EJ was talking about or not?
Yes.
Sure. No, I think that tonight what you want to do is to what you what do you want to charge the town attorney to draft? Bring it back before you.
I mean, I would see like, you know, maybe something like Martin's Edition, like just some very innocuous, like, you know, disclosure.
Or how about we make that the first task of the Ethics Commission is to write what they think is appropriate for office holders.
Who is the?
Mister Mister Town Attorney.
Trying to.
Mister Town Attorney, are there any municipalities where the board of elections is the same as the Ethics Commission?
Not that I'm aware of, Mister Mayor.
I can't. Why can't our?
We should have our attorney draft this, not not not.
Could you circulate to us the Martin's Edition?
Sure.
I think for me, that's what I want to see. I just want to see what that is because I'm still wrapping.
This isn't something that's urgent, just something that we should accomplish during this fiscal year.
And I think the idea of an ethics commission to take up complaints, I think is a good one. It's almost like an ombudsman role in the town. So I I like that idea.
And they give advisory opinions as well.
Yeah.
It's it's not going to. It's just something we need to put in place to prevent problems.
Yeah.
We haven't had, you know, it's not as if we we have this issue in the town, but we want to put this stuff in place to prevent problems.
Yeah, so I think I think the idea of ethics commission.
Don't be afraid.
Do that. But I think I would like to see what Martin's Edition has done.
We don't want to punish anybody or make it difficult.
Yeah.
All right. Um. Any other thoughts on this from anybody? Going once, going twice.
Let's have a look at Martin's Edition.
Okay, let's stick out. Motion to I hear a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. For all of it.
Second.
Second.
Call in favor.
All right.
Okay, we're out of here. Thank you.
I have time. Now I know.